Fifteen seconds to the TV studio is a heads up and then we'll start the meeting. Good afternoon. The time is 1:35 PM. The day is Thursday, September 5th, 2024. It's another beautiful day here in paradise and I'm happy to call to order the regularly scheduled September meeting for the City of West Palm Beach Zoning Board of Appeals. I'll first ask our Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan.
Here.
Alfred Fields.
Here.
Jonathan Burgess.
Dana Pecot.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Christopher Cameron, Matthew Chambers are not in attendance.
Okay, so for the purposes of the meeting, we do have a quorum. I will go over during Chairperson remarks, what the procedures and vote required is if, you know, with only four members present. But at this point, we'll go ahead and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Please be seated. First item of the business is the approval of the minutes that were in our board packet. I'll first ask if anyone here has any additions or corrections to the minutes.
I do. On page one, on my name Dana Pecot, it still says first alternate. It should be noted that I'm a member. Also, on page three, it refers to Mr. Pecot seconded. It should be Mrs. Pecot.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Anyone else have anything? I was going to make note that also on page three, it says Mr. Burgess seconded the motion. The motion was, and it should say, just insert the word approved after that. That's the sentence right above the chart showing the vote for that item. And if there are no other additions or corrections, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, it was motioned by Board Member Fields and seconded by Board Member Burgess. On favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes as amended are approved. Next, we'll go to a report from our Planning Division staff.
Angela Van Plannen is on Administrator. There's no report update. I know we get one more board member in so we can probably get this tennis court approved. So the others say they were coming and I say they were not coming. So hopefully, I don't know, maybe some traffic issues going on out there, I don't know. But no other report.
Thank you. Move to a report from the Chairperson. One thing that I just wanted to recognize was that, I understand that Tasia will be stepping off as our Board Secretary and we're welcoming Jasmine Hodgson, who's observing today, but will be taking over as Board Secretary. We're happy to welcome you, but also sad to miss Tasia. You've been wonderful, you know, guiding us here on the board and appreciate all the service you've provided to us. Then, the last, I think the other item that I was going to mention was, we do have a second alternate, Emeline Savage, who has joined the board. Is not present today, but we'll look forward to welcoming her. I did want to go through the way that the items will be heard at the meeting today. Matters before the ZBA are quasi judicial in nature. Anyone wishing to speak, including members of the public who wish to offer public comment, will need to be sworn in. The applicant will make a presentation and answer any questions from the board. Then the applicant will be followed by city staff who will provide a presentation and recommendation to the board and then will answer any questions. Members of the public will then be given the opportunity to provide comment with each person receiving up to three minutes. City staff will also insert any public comment received in advance of today's meeting, such as emails, voicemails, et cetera, into the record. Then the applicant will have the opportunity for rebuttal. The floor will then be closed and the board will go into executive session for discussion, motion, and a vote. As a note, by the rules for this board, four affirmative votes are required for approval. Since we have four members here today, that requires, at the moment, that requires unanimous approval for the four members that are here. And as it stands right now, I need to recuse myself from case number 3440, which would cause us to lose the quorum if that's the case, if we don't have another person in attendance. So with that, we'll now go to a declaration of ex parte communication from all the members up here. I'll start with Board Member Fields.
As a matter... As a matter to Zoning Board of Appeals, case number 3340, 3440, I'm sorry, and case number 3442, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert's opinion. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be a part of this record.
Thank you. Board Member Burgess.
As to matters before us today, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. And Board Member Pecot?
As to matter 3440 and 3442, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted an investigation. I have not made a site visit and I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record.
Thank you. As I mentioned, I am recusing myself from ZBA case number 3440. As it pertains to case number 3442, I have not had ex parte communications. I have not received written communications. I have not conducted investigation. I have not made a site visit. I have not received expert opinions. I request that these disclosures and all written communications be made part of the record. So with that, we will, at this point, move into the public hearing. The first step in that is for us to have all, anyone who wishes to speak on any of the items here today to stand up and be sworn in. So please rise if you plan to speak on any items here. And then the Board Secretary will swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Okay, thank you. We will go ahead and actually switch the order, hoping that, again, we will have another member here arrive and go, instead of going to continuing cases, case 3440, we'll go ahead and hear case 3442 first. So I'll ask the applicant, sorry, first I'll ask our Board Secretary to please read that item into the record.
A request by Anna Arias for a one-foot variance from Section 94-302B1 of the city's zoning and land development regulations within the side and rear setbacks to allow a seven-foot privacy wall. The subject property consisting of approximately .12 acres is located at 944 McIntosh Street within Commission District Number Five, Commissioner Christina Lambert.
Thank you. First, we'll ask the applicant to please come forward, state your name for the record, and provide us with your presentation. Please, sorry, we do have to capture it all on the microphone. So yeah, please just stand at the podium there. Thank you.
My name is Anna Arias and my boyfriend, Joseph Marinelli, we own the house 944 McIntosh Street and he will be making the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, that's another one.
Okay, so I'm requesting a one-foot variance for the wall that we have put in. It's a fence replacement. The reason behind it, we will see from the pictures, this is the house here. This here is the front of the house, the side, and the back of the house. The privacy wall here is for a few reasons. One is, this was our view before. This is now our view after. We have, this is the same side. This here was the other side, is to the right of the house, if you're looking at it, between pigeon cages and bird cages and just, it's not sightly to come home to after a long day's work. We paid, it's a brand-new house, it's newly built, it's two years old. It's built a lot higher than the houses that are currently on the block. And we're requesting to have that wall so that, we don't need to see that. I don't want to see, I can't tell someone else how to live. I can't tell someone else what to do with their property, but I don't believe that we should be subject to have to look at that when we get home. We keep it clean. We keep the house clean. We want to enjoy the property. We want to enjoy the backyard that, where we live. And this is the reason behind all of this. I don't really have much else to say. I mean, it's just, it is what it is. It's, let me go back, I guess, but like I said, we spent a lot of money for the house. We pay a lot of money in property taxes in West Palm Beach. We want to come home and enjoy what we have. And I don't want to argue and fight with my neighbors of cleanliness and bird cages and pigeon cages and dogs chained in their backyard. I don't want to see it. There are a lot, the owners are next to us that have the house with all the bird cages and everything. The one behind us are actually pleased that we have the wall for the privacy that they now have. When we first purchased the house, it was not paved, it was grass, and it went down on a hill. So if I went to the back of the fence, it was about that high, a six-foot fence. And I went down to the back of the property and it was up to probably my shoulders. I could see right over to everything that they're doing in their backyard. They could probably see everything that's going on in my backyard. If you look at it, here's the picture here. It's just, again, like I said, it's not sightly. This is something that we spend a lot of money to add to the house. We had it all stuccoed so it matches the house. So everything is aesthetically appealing. We put the, if you go to the next, maybe it was back one, the aluminum fences, we put them both on both sides of the house to go to the back. And you could see, I mean, the fences are six feet. I don't even know if it's a complete foot. If you look at it, we just planted all, what are the names? Kalushas on the right side that'll grow up to eight to 10 feet. That will cover this right side here. You could see it in the corner of this picture here. I can't expand it. But that's all the way down now, the property driveway line. And like I said, we just want to come home to peace, if you will.
Okay, thank you. So yeah, if that's everything, that's good. We'll go to see if any board members have any questions.
Yes, sir.
Start off with Board Member Pecot. Any questions of the applicant?
Not at this time.
Okay, Board Member Burgess?
So you may have mentioned this and I apologize if you did. The house you had purchased, and it was new construction prior to that. So it's the elevation of the first floor in your home relative to the bottom of the fence line. Would you say, according to the, you know, the backup material we have on the staff report, that there's a foot elevation difference or so between the new building code required elevation of the new construction and the existing kind of grade of the property line? Does that sound?
Well, the way the house is built, I mean, was built pretty high. We're still pretty high over compared to the houses behind us or the houses to the side of us. And like I said, when it was first built, it was a wood fence. I guess it was a shadow box style fence. And if you walk down to the end of the property, if I came here, I would be able to see this gentleman here about this height. Maybe it was a little bit high as I walked down the end of the property.
Yeah, sorry, please say it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, sorry about that. But if I walked over to this gentleman here, like I said, the fence probably would have been to about shoulder height. And I would see completely over everything that's going on on all sides of the house. The one side here, if you look at the right side, that's, it's probably about six or seven feet right there. And again, it was probably like a three drop like that, a six-foot fence that I can completely see over. And now I cannot. We put the, there are lights through, we have the decorations. We put the, I put that up, but it's like wallpaper. It looks pretty cool. It's a bird, sea beach. It looks actually very cool. You look at it from the house to the back, it looks really nice. But that's not what's important right now. What's important is for you to approve our one foot. Again, it doesn't even look like it's a complete foot. If you look at the fence, because it's a six-foot fence and that's the height, that's a six-foot aluminum fence that goes across for the gate. And then that's the difference in the height, of the height going up. If that answers your question. You give me a microphone and I continue to talk, I'm sorry.
No, thank you for the clarification. I'll ask further follow-up to staff on the language in the staff report and I probably will get a better handle of the front setback difference by looking at the video that staff generally shares about the right-of-way. So I'll reserve my further questions for staff. Thanks.
Someone came today and I believe it took pictures. I thought I saw it in email that someone had to come and take pictures of the house prior to us coming here today. So I don't know if they went yesterday or if they came in this morning. I came from work, so I'm not 100% sure.
Sure, yeah. We'll see in the staff presentation, I think, that. Board Member Fields?
No questions at this time.
Okay. My question is, so based on the photographs and the information in the staff report, this is coming in after the fact as opposed to it, you know, because it appears that it has been constructed at seven feet. And I just wanted to know a little bit more about the history behind, I guess, why this is coming before us after the fact, after construction, as opposed to before?
We put in for the permits of it and as the gentleman was building it, everything seemed to be going well. And then I asked him to put the last brick on so I didn't have to see it. So he did that at my request, actually, the person that constructed the wall.
I see.
So he was finished, there was a cap, and I asked him just to put the cap on top of it to complete it. So it had a finished look, so it wasn't open on top. And that was probably where the difference is in height, because I wanted it to look finished.
Okay, so likely, and I guess we can confirm this with staff as well, that the plans that came in for permit showed a wall at six feet, but then during construction, you provided direction to the contractor to add to the height and he did it without coming back into the city?
I guess for the cap, for it to look finished.
I see.
I did. I asked him to make it look finished.
Okay.
Otherwise, it would have been like an open cinder block, if you will. So I asked him to cap it so it looked finished.
Understood, okay.
Just for, again, aesthetic looks of it, because I have to, I'm looking at it on a daily basis. The person to my neighbors are also looking at it. I just want it to look aesthetically.
So when he originally built it, there was, at the original height, or what he was building to, at that time, it was six feet, but it wasn't going to have a finished top?
Finished cap, the top layer, the last brick on top. That's correct.
Okay. Yeah, and I guess when I'm looking at it, it looks, it doesn't, it doesn't, when I think of a cap, I usually think of something that might, you know, have a, you know, maybe project, it might project a little bit further outside from the wall. This looks like the wall just maintains.
It's completely flush. It's all flush.
Maintains, is flush all the way up?
Yes, it's just, so you, I mean, you've seen cinder blocks before they have the openings and whatever.
Yes.
Maybe this is just a one-flat top finish block, I guess, if it would be called.
Okay, so the last course he ran still had the open holes on it?
Yes, sir.
And then, I see.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, I don't have any further questions. So you can go ahead and sit down and then staff will come up and make their presentation now. So thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll go ahead and hear from staff now.
All right, good afternoon, Board members. Eric Cologne, Associate Planner with Development Services for the Record here, presenting ZBA case number 3442, a side and rear variance for a residential privacy wall. So just a little bit of background, this is a new constructed house. Permits were approved for that in about 2022. The current homeowners did purchase afterwards. And the variance requested is one foot as noted, as the current requirement for fences and walls in the side and rear is no higher than six feet. And the proposed wall is seven feet. During my research in the permit history, there was a permit submitted for a six-foot fence. However, it seems that the extra foot was added afterwards without a revision in the city. So here you can see a survey of the existing property and location of the wall. As noted, the residence was built in 2022, before that being a vacant lot for several years. It was constructed by a local home building company before being sold to the current homeowners. So according to the survey, the new lot was raised two and a half feet higher than the other existing properties. And we can see that, it's not really visible on the survey, but the elevation is about two and a half feet higher from the street to the finished floor elevation. So the house was constructed with a raised lot and the side and rear property lines are at a lower elevation than the main structure, meaning a fence that meets the height regulations would not offer the same amount of privacy due to the nature of the raised lot. So here's a site video of the current conditions. As evident in the site video, the wall will not alter the look of the property as to where it will not be consistent with the surrounding homes in character of the neighborhood. The materials used are consistent with use for the principal structure to maintain harmony with the neighboring properties. And in addition, to minimize visibility and impact of the wall to the neighborhood character, the wall is located only within the side and rear setbacks and is not located within the front setback, which requires fencing and walls to be a maximum of four feet in height. So the applicants have stated in their justification that one of the main reasons that the wall was erected was to seek privacy from the adjacent neighbor to the west that was a recipient of regular code violations. Staff had considered that if the neighboring property were to comply with the violations, the need for the privacy wall wouldn't be as necessary. However, staff discussions with code enforcement revealed that the violations in the side and rear of the residential properties cannot always be enforced as officers can only cite issues which are publicly visible. Therefore, the homeowners would have less expectation of privacy than other nearby properties due to the unique nature of the raised lot. So based on the findings that the petition meets all the required variance standards in Section 9438D6 of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Regulations, staff is recommending approval of the variance request.
Thank you. Now turn to the board for any questions of staff. We'll start off with Board Member Burgess.
Yeah, thank you for the clarification on the finished floor elevation relative to the adjacent properties, because it's helpful and then the video showed that it's downhill, stepping downhill from the street next door. So to me, the survey states that the finished floor elevation is about a foot higher than the property to the, well, to one side or the other. I'm not sure where the north arrow is. So that answers my earlier question and no further questions for staff. Thanks.
Thank you. Board Member Fields?
No question, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Pecot?
No questions.
Okay, you answered, I think, the question I had had of the applicant regarding the permit history. So I don't think I have any further questions either. So that concludes, sorry, that concludes the staff presentation. I will now move to the public hearing. We'll open up to members of the public. I hadn't received any cards, but if anyone is here present from the public who wishes to speak on this item, please come forward. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask staff if there were any emails, voicemails, or any other forms of communication that need to be entered.
No emails or voicemails.
Okay, thank you. With that, I'll close the public comment portion of this item and move to executive session. So go to board members for any discussion on this item. Start off with Board Member Fields.
No, I'm in agreement with the findings of the staff on this.
Okay, Board Member Pecot?
No discussion.
Okay, Board Member Burgess?
The clarification, I think, is that the front setback, does this grant a variance within the front setback? Or is it only within the side and rear setbacks after that 25-foot setback mark? Because it looks like it only, it's built only along with the front setback facade. It's only in the side and rear. It does not encroach in the front. So granting the variance will, and sorry, I didn't ask this earlier, but I think that is an important clarification in terms of how it blends into the context of the rest of the street. And knowing that, you know, I think we're stepping downhill and have to resolve real-world situations relative to new building code, finished floor elevations and such, relative to right-of-ways, I think it's consideration in this particular case.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. Yeah, that's, I think, really useful input. And just, you know, from my two cents worth, I'm not thrilled that this is coming in after the fact as opposed to coming in, you know, prior to it. And I understand, really, the contractor should have maybe recognized, identified that the permit was only for six-foot height and at the time that they were directed, maybe come back to the city to see if it was possible to raise the height. At the same time, it's built, it's in place. Looking at visually, it doesn't, you know, I don't think it provides, you know, any really detrimental impact to the, you know, neighboring properties. And there is a justification based on the fact that the finished floor elevation for the house had to be raised as well, too. And so as far as the line of sight, it basically almost gives you the same effect that a six-foot wall would have because of the difference isn't great. So again, I, just my two cents is I'm not excited that we're seeing this after the fact. But again, I think there is adequate justification through the staff report and what we've heard today to vote on this. With that, unless there's any further discussion? With that, unless there's any further discussion, I'll entertain a motion from the board.
I move that the zoning board of appeals grant ZBA case number 3442, a request by Anna Arias for a one-foot variance from section 94-302B1 of the city's zoning and land development regulations within the side and rear setbacks to allow a seven-foot privacy wall. The motion is based upon the testimony presented along with the application submitted and staff report, which constitutes competent substantial evidence. The board hereby makes finding that the fact that each of the criteria in Article II, Section 94-38D6 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations have been met.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. The motion was made by Board Member Fields and seconded by Board Member Burgess. I'll ask our Board Secretary to please call the roll.
Christopher Hagan?
Yes.
Alfred Fields?
Yes.
Dana Picot?
Yes.
Jonathan Burgess?
Yes.
Okay, congratulations, your application has been approved. Moving on, we'd be moving to case number 3440, however, as mentioned, I would need to recuse myself from that case, in which case we lose a quorum, so we would need to, it looks, appears, continue this to the next regularly scheduled ZBA meeting. I'll ask, you know, staff just to confirm, and do we need to vote, I'll ask our board attorney, we need to vote on that? Okay.
Yes, we can continue it to October.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to continue that case.
So moved. Second.
Okay, and to clarify, I can vote on the motion to continue, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, the motion is to continue to the next regularly scheduled meeting?
ZBA meeting, correct. So the motion is made by Board Member Burgess and seconded by Board Member Fields to continue this case to the next regularly scheduled ZBA meeting. We can just do a voice vote, I think, so all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, so it is continued to the next regularly scheduled ZBA meeting, and as you, as we all know, fourth time's a charm, so do apologize to, to the city that we've, that this board has been unable to, to hear this item for the last few meetings. With that, going back to the agenda, we do not have any other unfinished business, or new business, or other business, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Board Member Fields, seconded by Board Member Picot, all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The meeting is adjourned at 2:05 PM.